Okay, we got put in writing?
Uh huh.
Okay, we're gonna call a meeting to order because we got a heck of an agenda today. Do we have any minutes on reports received and filed?
Oh, yes, we've got the March 2015 Treasures reconciliation report.
Okay. You got anything Deb?
Nope.
Nope, okay. Commissioner Committee Liaison Reports, upcoming meetings and events.
We had Campbell last week and we changed the bylaws in the MOU. County's not gonna have two spots and we always had two, but we're also gonna have a small communities spot on the board. And then Callaway County will have their own spot as well as Holt Summit. And I think Jefferson City added one more, didn't they Larry? Larry Ben's always not here. So, there are some changes there. Because Taos and Wardsville are now part of our Campbell.
Okay.
So... But St. Martin will have that small community seat as far as I know until something else changes. But, then we got Leadership Friday.
Yep.
Got an MMRPC meeting tomorrow at noon. And then, I had an ED meeting on Thursday, but I don't think that's right. You guys have that?
Uh-uh.
At the Chamber?
No.
No, we got one coming up. Friday, May 1st is what I got.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I thought that was odd too, but...
You get your own meeting.
No. I think that's all I got.
Okay.
You got anything?
I got Lions Club tomorrow and Thank Forward Meeting tomorrow.
Are you going to all your Commissioner meetings?
Many as I can make. Many as I can make. Okay, presentation from invited guest, Jim Casey. I had gotten an email where he has three members of his Board of Directors we need to...
The county commissioner appoints our Board of Directors, three members are appointed each year. There's a total of nine members on the board. They serve for three years or until they resign or until they are replaced. Right now, we have three individuals who have been appointed before. Dan Renfro, who is with Hawthorne Bank, is interested in serving a full term. He was appointed for one year to fill the unexpired term of Linda Morris. Suzie Register, who is with the Jefferson City Public Schools Special Ed, is interested in a second three-year term. And Tom Quinn, who is retired from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed, is interested in a sec- a second three-year term.
And you're...
The Board of Directors is officially requesting that they be reappointed if the commission so agrees.
You're happy with them? Yeah. See their names or...
I'd like to table that so I could just visit with those folks before we appoint them.
Good enough.
Okay. Well, do you have anything else you want? Boy, that was easy. Thanks Jeff.
Thanks.
Thanks Jim.
Next, we've got Tim Eubank and Tom.
Tom Hahn couldn't be here today.
Okay.
I think Larry gave you all some information, some pictures of some drainage problems regarding the stormwater. That's on the property line between me and Tom. Years ago, when I guess Big Billy did a subdivision, he stopped the drain right here, up top, and so it's hanging on down for whatever reason. It was washing bad, so I dug and put in a French filter down level with the pipe to try to help it drain the pipe out. And it's built up and, as you can see by the picture, we have a mess whenever it happens.
Just for, out where we live, which is on the bluff southeast, we have the same problem. We have a storm drain that comes between our property and our neighbor's property. And we built back in the late seventies. So, my neighbor and I, we finally had Sam Gaines, I think, come in and do it. And we just ran it farther down. And we've got like a seven-foot trench now down in the woods because that drainage just...
Once we do run it down to where it dumps out, we're gonna have a major erosion problem.
Yeah, that's what we've got too. I don't know... Larry or...
This is just one of thousands we have in the county.
Yeah.
I mean, we have these all over the place, but... And I don't really have a good answer for it.
No, I have the same problem. I mean, I really do. When I saw this and I said, "Oh, yeah." That ours, ours was like that too. And...
So, basically what you're saying is just our problem to take care of ourselves, like you did your...
That's what we, that's what we, my neighbor and I, we just ran it on farther down into the, our backyard's wooded, so, and it slopes down. And we, you know, this is going back to the late seventies, early eighties. We have a seven-foot trench back there where it's come out.
In our subdivision, Greg's, and I'll let Eric talk to that. We have made some changes, I think, now that he's reviewing them of running the pipes a little further down. Eric, you want to talk?
In the past, before any of the subdivisions were really reviewed from an engineering standpoint, developers just kinda did what they want. And a lot of times, it just made sense to run the pipe to a spot that kinda dumped out in a convenient location and left it at that. Usually, it isn't a problem. However, as properties develop, houses are built, yards are graded, the, you know, original intent of the stormwater drainage changes, okay? It's natural.
Sure.
No fault of anybody. So, we do, today, we do monitor those a little bit better and check and make sure they run the pipes down to the back of the property, out of the way of any kind of, you know, grading, yard area, or anything like that. But, as it's stated in the planning and subdivision regulations adopted in 1999 by the Planning Commission, the drainage ways in stormwater facilities are maintenance responsibility of the property owner.
Oh, they even if they go past the sixteen-foot easement? Would you then be dumping water onto the off your easement?
If you pull the plat, you know, you can debate whether it goes off or on the easement. As originally constructed, it should be in the easement. As things change over time, you know, and that kinda goes back to why the regulations are as such, because the county cannot come in and police and monitor exactly what happens to property as homes are built and as things are changed. And so, anything within the easement is the maintenance responsibility of the property owner. You know, if water dumps out and goes one way or another, I don't know that there's anybody's at fault. That's just kind of a natural...
Yeah. I don't remember us ever having this much, but...
Yeah, I mean...
Yeah, ours...
I don't know how many gallons per minute go through there. There's a bunch. Basically, and I don't know how you, you know, basically you have water from here down to here, then you're gonna have another problem.
Yeah.
But, once it gets here, do we like say, "Okay, that's the people's behind this problem. It's not ours." You know? Or do they come back at us and say, "Hey, we got a problem because you're dumping all your stormwater and washing us out down below." You know, it's solvable, but it's, to be done right, I don't know whether you'd have to put a dump in there, run it all the way down here, then rip wrap this to keep it from eroding. Because we've, what we've done is we've put compost down there to keep that thing. That's kept our bank up. We've got about a ten or twelve-foot hole down there now.
All right.
And I think if we pump more down there, we're gonna have a lake down there before we're done. And I don't know if there's any federal stormwater relief money you could use to help that. Do they still have that program?
I don't think so.
They don't?
I mean, there's, we've done a project once in which we used some grant money through DNR. I think it was minimal, just a token amount more or less. Tim, we run into these, like Larry said, they're everywhere. I mean, I could tell, we could go out and every subdivision, we have these things. It's unavoidable to some degree. It just happens when these things get built. You don't know for sure exactly what things are gonna do.
Oh, sure. Oh, sure. Sure. I think how many houses have been built up and since this has been done, not a problem. Years ago, the county did offer to supply the pipe for that. Would they engineer it for, would you engineer it for us Tim?
I think that, yeah, that'd be fair. I mean, it doesn't...
Because me and Tom can do the work. I mean, we can get a VACO and we can do that. But, it probably needs to be engineered and, which, I don't need some engineer too, I guess, but it tells what's done. Because I was in the stormwater business years and years ago, and this kind of volume, you're probably looking, I mean, we probably wouldn't do it, but you're probably looking at a transition, a dump into another pipe down to help slow it down. I don't know. Like I said, if we move all this water straight down directly here, we're gonna have another problem. And then, I'm afraid, I'm afraid these houses back here, we're gonna be getting water in their basements.
Yeah, and I think before we offer any engineering service, we need to make sure on personal property that we're all right legally.
Well, you're on your easement.
We do have, we do have a drainage easement in that subdivision.
Yeah, you have an easement there.
I mean, the easement's there for a reason. That's where water drains now.
Sure, sure.
Yeah.
And we're not, when the street's built and the pipes are put in, the water's still going the same place it is. It's just a higher discharge. More water.
More water.
Generally, a little faster. So, if you can, if you can contain that and make it to where it doesn't wash out anything, you know, the theory is, we'd have to go in and check it and make sure it's not gonna cause any damage.
I think, well, that's where we have a problem is down here in this creek. It's gonna, it's gonna go nuts. I mean, but there ain't nothing we can do about that unless we take some rip wrap in there ourselves and, you know, build up the banks and do that. We'll, you all think about it too, whatever we can do.
Me and Eric can get with Tim and...
That's fine.
And Tom and work through Jill and see if we can come up with some...
I mean, it looks like a lot, Tim. I mean, I agree, there's a lot of water coming through there. But, I mean, really, it's doing what it's supposed to do. I mean, you don't have any erosion coming out of the end of the pipe or, I mean, the grass is holding up, it's spreading out. I mean, that's really what you want stormwater to do, is spread out versus be concentrated.
Six weeks after it does, is it still wet?
Yeah, well...
You know, stormwater, you want to get away.
Right, but you're also draining about ten acres of area too, from all these other properties through your backyard.
Twenty-five or thirty acres.
Yeah, yeah. But, I mean, just in the direct, just those several houses there too, so...
Well, when somebody drenches, we can't cut your grass for you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
All right, we'll continue, we'll work on it. Like I said, we're up to do anything we can.
Yeah, I sympathize. We really did, we had this, we had the same problem, but...
Yeah, like I said, we can get it away. I mean, we can cure the problem, but I just think it's gonna create another problem.
Yeah.
And, you know, like, there's ways to fix everything.
Sure.
We gotta get a dump truck load of rip wrap down there and spread it out by hand, I think we'll do it.
We'll come out, meet with you and Tom.
Oh, sure. That'll be fine.
Okay, thanks, Tim. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, presentation from Justin Stringer with MoPerm.
My name's Justin Stringer, I'm with MoPerm. MoPerm, you know for sure, not familiar with it, we provide property liability insurance for the county. As part of our, we're a shared risk pool. What that means is, we take in your premiums throughout the year, one with yours and other members around the state. We have about nine hundred and four members currently. We take in their money throughout the year, we pay out claims overhead, and whatever's left, we actually give back to our members. So, that's what I'm here today for. Actually, I'm not asking you guys for anything, I'm actually giving you money, so...
Great.
Change of pace, right? So, I have here today a check for, it's twenty-six thousand eight hundred and three dollars.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
And we're gonna give it back to Deb. You always give the mic to the woman.
And that's all I got, guys.
Okay, thanks, Justin.
Thanks very much. Do we wanna, is Mike, is Mike is your lady here? I mean, we can change our agenda a little bit.
This place here?
Okay. Let's rearrange our agenda a little bit, go ahead and get this done while you're here and then you guys can go on and...
So, we're doing the abatement?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is an abatement order request for 2519 Tyler Ridge. This is a rental property off of Wardsville Road on Tyler Ridge Road. Received the original complaint on 3/11. Did a site visit. On the visit, ninety-nine percent of the sighting had been removed from the trailer, exposing the fiberglass and cardboard, and all the windows had been removed. The structure of the mobile home appears to be compromised, creating a public safety hazard. On 4/10, I was able to contact West Police, or she called me and said a contractor had been hired to remove the trailer and solid waste. As of Friday, the trailer was still there and while some of the solid waste and stagnant water items had been moved, stagnant water items had been removed, but most of the solid waste was still on the property. It'd just been moved to different locations. So, the property, as I said, is just off Wardsville Road on Tyler Ridge. And this is the property difference on 3/13 and 4/17. There was quite a few items here in the front yard that held water, coolers, cooler lids, some tires and some other items. As I said, that, those items have been removed from that area, but there's still some solid waste coming off of the trailer. At the end of Tyler Ridge, we still have the recliner there. As I said, some of the solid waste had been moved to the chair or to the recliner, and the items have just been moved around. And this area is somewhat cleaner and more organized than what it was. But, these are the conditions that are there as of last Friday.
Mrs. Poyce?
I respectfully request an extension.
Let's turn the microphone. Okay.
I'd like to respectfully request an extension of the removal of the dismantled mobile home. I have talked to Darrell Smith, Mobile Home Transporting, and he's agreed to do that. He needs, as long as three days without rain. He lives in Higbee. And, said the man that lived in the mobile home left it like that on my property. So, you know, I know I'm over the deadline, but I wouldn't fully intend to get it cleaned up or get it removed.
Well, we're talking rain, I think, for the next, at least through this week.
So, is he gonna remove the mobile home and are you gonna pick up all the trash and all that other stuff?
Yeah, he's gonna have to dismantle it. It can't be moved because the fellow that lived there...
So, what about all the other stuff around the mobile home?
Yeah, we're gonna put that in a dumpster also and have it hauled off, everything.
Okay. So, you're gonna do all that at once?
Yes, all at once.
Okay.
So, within two weeks, could you have it done? Barring, barring rain for...
Depending on the weather, yes, I think we can. If it's not raining, he said the equipment, we could, you know, because we have to hire a skid loader or rent a skid loader, whatever deadline...
How long's it been, Mike?
This was...
When did you issue notice?
I gave about forty-five, yeah, 3/11. So, we're two months and I think she got notice. I got the call about the 3/15, 3/20, right in that range.
So, we're just about thirty days in?
Yeah.
May I say something?
Sure.
I'm Lisa's sister. It's been very difficult to find someone willing to dismantle this or on-site. And so, a lot of time has been spent on and contacting the Allied Waste or M&amp;W Hall and to find out, you know, when they can provide with roll-off dumpsters. Allied, we contacted them on Thursday, they can have it there on Friday. And we've been told by the Mobile Home Transporting that we need two roll-off dumpsters. So, he is, we just were in contact with him yesterday and he said he needs three days with no rain in order to get in there and start working. So, you know, we have had a lot of rain, you know, historically, I think, this time of the year. I don't know if a month is a reasonable request. And maybe getting contacted to keep in the context of the situation.
Mike, I know you had worked on another issue with another property owner on a mobile home. I mean, are they having any issues with asbestos or anything that you know of?
They did because it was a commercial operation. They had to have asbestos testing done and they got a stop work order.
And this is not...
And they're working with DNR. There's, from what I understand from DNR, as long as, it's only one within one year on the demolition, as long as they notify DNR ten days prior to the demolition, they're fine. So, they do have to notify DNR.
So, I move that we give the Mrs. Poyce thirty days to comply and be in contact with Mike Sapp. And if nothing's done, then we'll go ahead and further abate.
Do you wanna go ahead and do the abatement order now, thirty days out? Or, I know we've done that in the past with a, kind of a cutoff? Or, I can come back up?
Yeah, I'd like to bring it back.
Okay.
I just, you know, as long as you guys will work with us and try to get it cleaned up. And I know that's a problem that you really weren't expecting.
When I talk to the neighbors around there, they really want the stuff that's on the ground gone.
Mm-hmm.
And they're at the end of the street. I mean, if you can get that done this week, that would go a long way to the neighbors out there in that area. That was one of the reasons I...
Could you do that?
Yes.
I mean, not just moved around, gone.
Yeah, gone.
Go on.
If I can get some men to parry it up.
Up inside the trailer or something, out of sight, out of mind would go a long way to the neighbors out there.
Yeah, hire somebody to help me physically move it.
Yeah, because of the recliner and other items sitting up there.
It was a mess.
He already made a motion.
Do you want to change?
No, it's still thirty days.
Thirty days, okay.
Yeah. I second that. Definitely, we go thirty days.
Okay.
There's no certain reason to come up and revisit it in two weeks because we're gonna have rain.
Yeah, we're gonna have rain.
We may be back in thirty days talking about it. I agree with Mike, if y'all can get the other stuff picked up, that's something we can actually take care of. Have them bring the haul off out there and just throw it in there.
Okay.
Okay.
That'll help out a ton.
Got a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, now we can go back to our...
Mike, is that water leak taken care of there?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I know I didn't hear anything in the law, so I was assuming that...
Yeah, he got it fixed and I didn't hear anything correct over here.
Okay, good deal.
That was the same trailer. Nobody's living there now, so it's definitely taken care of.
I know. I was wondering if that was taken care of or if he just moved out. Thank you, Michael.
Okay, I'll go back to our bids and contracts. Signing of agreement with salute to America.
We're waiting for that to come back as far as...
We'd already approved this.
Yes.
No. We didn't approve anything on that.
I thought we voted on it.
No.
We voted on whether to send in the letter and you guys told me I was sending the contract.
We sent them a letter, but we didn't approve anything.
Okay, okay.
Can't sign it yet, we gotta vote it. I move we approve and sign the agreement with salute to America. You're gonna have to second some.
Second.
Discussion.
I'm just not doing ten thousand for you, so, that's my own little personal policy there.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose?
Nay. Oh, wait, same sign? Aye.
Aye.
Are you gonna vote?
I voted.
It's tied one to one.
Did you? I didn't hear you.
I said aye.
Did you hear him?
I said aye.
Well, he seconded it, but he didn't vote.
I said aye. Oh, God.
Did you hear him?
I'm saying aye. No, I didn't hear him, but...
I said aye.
It's just funny.
Okay.
No mercy.
Because it was a tie.
We're done with three, three months.
Signing of contract for Ebola monitoring, where's, there's Christie.
Good morning. The Department of Health and Senior Services has received some money from CDC to reimburse LPHAs that monitored travelers that came back into the United States from one of the Ebola-affected countries. So, they sent us a contract because we monitored them electronically. We get about forty-five dollars a day. We figured out that we had two people that we monitored for like four and a half days because, you know, they decided not to come back to Missouri. We had one person that we monitored for nineteen and a half days. So, our estimated reimbursement is about twelve-hundred-eighty-two dollars and fifty cents. So, I just need you to sign the contract so we can be reimbursed for that monitoring.
We'd like being reimbursed.
And then, who's the contract with?
Department of Health and Senior Services.
Okay. And is this for the whole year or...
No, they're very specific about their dates. Apparently, it's just from December 22nd through May something. So, if you, we did monitor someone before December 22nd and for some reason, they don't, that's not, it doesn't count. It's only from December 22nd through May.
So, now, if we have somebody in July that we have to monitor, we're, there's not a...
So, we won't do it or are we required to do it or...
We're not really required to do it. They are gonna ask us to do it if someone comes back in, but unless they get more money from CDC, it won't be reimbursed.
CDC or another State Department or...
No, it's the Federal Center for Disease Control and Prevention.
So, this is basically to cover stuff we've already done?
Yep.
Yeah, you had, what, two students that came back from Lincoln?
No, they ended up not coming.
Oh, they ended up not coming back, okay.
This is two people that, like I said, Jamie monitored for two days that, or for four days each, that actually didn't come back into the country. And then, we had one other person that was in Cole County that we monitored for nineteen and a half days.
I mean, I'm all for getting reimbursed. I just think this is kinda putting the card after the horse.
I agree.
I mean, we're signing a contract that's retroactive.
We do that with emergency services.
And Ebola really wasn't, wasn't an issue until last...
Well, and I think, you know, the Division of Global Migration and Quarantine would ask the states to monitor. Of course, the states pass it on to the locals and then later, CDC's like, "Oh, we should reimburse them for that work." So, it is retroactive.
It's kinda forgotten again until we have more of an outbreak or something like that. Seems like every month and a half, two months, somebody will come up that they send to, so...
Well, and that was kinda to my point is that, you know, this contract should really be for the entire year or a year contract.
Forever.
Well, or, you know, or a renewable yearly contract. I mean, if they're gonna pay for it, they should pay for it ongoing, but...
It's from December, December 22nd until May 15th.
Weird, weird time period.
We agree.
Government at work.
Yeah. Well, if they're gonna give us money, let's just take as much as we can get.
I'm saying that's the other options, but I don't know.
We don't need it?
We already did the work, so I might as well get reimbursed for it.
Yeah.
So, I move we sign the contract with the HSS for the Ebola monitoring.
I'll second it. Jill, did you get the contract ready?
She, she did review.
Okay, this is the one we...
You're okay?
Yeah.
Okay.[1737.16] Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I heard you. I hear good out of my left ear.
Signing of asbestos contract.
Okay, I'm sorry. I put this on the agenda wrong. It's really not asbestos. It is an asbestos removal company.
I'm the contractor.
But then I'll let Larry take it from there.
Heavy metal.
Heavy metal.
Still working on trying to-
Check your hearing.
At Monticello. I contacted DNR about burying the blocks on site, which they do have paint on it, so I have to get the paint tested before I can do that or otherwise I have to do landfill. So the proposal is to get the, get the paint on the building tested.
Because the brick was painted, I guess, makes you-
Yeah, the blocks are painted, so you have to have those tested.
So are we testing for lead or what?
They are, it has eight heavy metals paint inspection.
I think it's eleven hundred dollars.
Yeah, eleven hundred dollars.
How much does it cost just to haul it off?
Seventy-nine dollars a ton.
Okay, so it's eleven hundred dollars.
Plus the haul, right?
Well, yeah, plus on the ton.
Right. Plus eighty dollars an hour for a dumpster.
And if it does have lead paint on it, we'll have to take it to landfill.
Oh, my gosh.
We don't really have a, a lot of capital need to say it.
No, we don't.
Why didn't you just bury it?
What? Did he say that on the-
S C H T.
Wouldn't our fire districts like to come over and use it for testing? We could, we could, we could, we could, we could use it for, you know, let our fire departments, uh-
I don't, I don't think that, like, right now.
It just never ends, does it?
It's only money.
You write the check then.
Have you seen that contract deal?
Yes.
Is this coming out of capital or? Let's get it done. I move that we approve and sign the contract with ARSI to test the paint at Monticello.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're almost done, aren't we?
Uh, discussion of following bids. Twenty-fourteen thirty-eight carpet replacement.
We want to move that down with the long-term planning discussion.
Oh, okay.
Long term's next.
Good idea, good idea. Uh, moving to cooperative procurement for toner and copy paper discussion.
Um, we bid the toner and copy paper out three years ago. Um, it's time to do something with it. We don't have any more options for extension. The last time I bid it, I got no less than seventeen responses from California to North Carolina. I mean, my thought is realistically, we're going to stick with the local providers. Um, we do have cooperative purchasing options available through them. I would like to put out an informal bid and invite Samco Schrevers and then any other suggestions and, uh, and do it that way instead of putting it out for a small bid.
So moved.
All in favor? Discussion of consolidating purchase of multi-function printers and related service.
Yeah, we've talked about this before. There's different offices and departments that have, you know, multiple machines with multiple providers. There are obvious benefits to consolidating that. Um, some of the shortfalls in doing that are going to be, uh, they are by territory. So if we commit to one make of printer, then we're kind of stuck with that person to service it. I'm just kind of looking for a direction on that.
So give me your thoughts on how you want to go about bidding that. I mean, is it, do we, do we want to make it like all-inclusive or, you know, it's a, it's a three or four-year deal?
I think so. I think if we do it too, we should look possibly into leasing with a buyout option. If, if you guys are wanting to consolidate, um, I'd have to sit down and really think about it, but I think we should look into leasing if we're looking to a four or five-year deal. Because what I'm told, that's kind of the life of the machines anyway. It seems to be a cheaper option.
Yeah, because we'll do them basically as, as one gives out, we'll just the new, as we're replacing.
If we buy them to replace them, yeah, I don't think we should just replace them.
No, take everything and no, no.
Um, but yeah, if we-
So is this from, sorry to interrupt you.
You're not.
Is this from small printers, fax machines, all-in-one copiers?
Desktop units. Um, we could do that. I see this being the larger multi-function that we actually get.
Could we have an option there though or?
Do we have what?
Could we have an option there? I mean, I know, I know we have some, a lot of those HP all-in-ones, desktops, but I mean-
We buy most of those off of the state contract anyway with Dale and WWT is very competitive.
To me, this is two different discussions, printers versus the multi-function things. Uh, the, we've had P, different departments buy different printers from local resources and stuff. Personally, I haven't seen it really pan out. Um, they're, I think they're probably more expensive and less compatible with, than just buying a standard. Everybody buys an HP printer off the state contract for four hundred dollars or whatever. You use the same number as, you know, and that kind of stuff. The other thing is if everybody does something different, then obviously your supplies are all over the place.
And that's kind of what you talked about. We were wanting to do, um, maybe four grades. You know, this one were bells and whistles. This one kind of the plain Jane, depending on the individual needs of the office. And then if you need a printer, which one of these, you know, fits your needs?
Well, and the printer, the, the, the contract that, or the WWT Worldwide Tech, who we buy ninety-nine percent of, or I buy from ninety-nine percent of the time, they have different grades of everything. I mean, you get, they send out a huge spreadsheet and they have them categorized by, you know, uh, usually it's speed, uh, duty cycle, those kinds of things, you know, heavier and, you know, faster and that kind of stuff. But there's lots of different options on the, just the standard contract that you can pick off of. If it doesn't meet your needs, then you get a special, you have to go get a quote and they, you know, and they beat anybody's price that I've ever seen. But that isn't the, you know, the standalone copier, scanner, whatever, like the one sitting out here. Uh, we've had the situation, and we do, I mean, every department seems to, you know, there's nothing standardized. They can go buy, and they generally buy local, I mean, or always buy local. But at the same time, there's nothing standard. We're not mandating anything standard. They're kind of free to do what they want. That's good or bad, but I mean, that's just the deal. We don't buy it, I mean, you know, in a systematic way about it, so.
I think Jennifer's looked into that. I think I know where you're going, Chris, as far as deciding, um, do we need printers on everybody's desk to do the scanning? Or do we use this one multi-functional piece of equipment to do your printing and your scanning? Now, each one of these companies are willing and ready to come in here and give suggestions on how we need to equip our stuff the most efficient way. And they're, they're all fighting at the top to do that. But then to get all your departments and elected officials to cooperate with that and, you know, unfortunately, we've all gotten accustomed to a printer here and then the big, uh, copy machine somewhere else. So I don't know how we can direct that.
We've done that in the past. When they go out and they buy something, we deduct it out of their budget for the next year.
Yeah, and that is, I mean, that's really the choice. Do we want to have a departmental single unit or do we want to have, you know, desktop or whatever? And I'm sure you're going to get an argument from anybody that they do what they do because of a certain reason.
Right.
And, uh, and I can agree with that. I mean, if, you know, like Larry's office downstairs, you got somebody staring at your window. You want printer at hand and to hand them their receipt or whatever right there instead of leaving the window and going somewhere, you know, I, you know, I can see everybody's got an argument for it. But that's kind of the debate. How do you streamline the process? When Debbie's talking about somebody coming in, they're going to say, oh, you should buy this big network unit because it'll service all your needs, but then that doesn't account for getting up and going and doing, you know, at a single spot.
Right. I guess what really, and I, I know what you're saying and I'm open to let any of them come in and, I mean, I don't really want to hear their presentation. I'd like to see what the, the end number is and see how it works for us. But, um, where I was going with the HPs is that, I know from my experience, is that you can't get anybody to work on them. I mean, they're just pretty much junk when they break. And so if they had a smaller unit or something where somebody could come in and work on those desktop units for Debbie or whoever that needed that, and I'm sure that they have smaller units too.
One of the problems with the small units is it normally costs more repair than the body. And in my case, well, first off, you all don't pay for any of my equipment. I pay for that.
Hand him a microphone if you don't. Since I was taken to task because since we're-
I don't want to say we get after it.
Yeah.
In, in my instance, you all don't pay for any of my equipment. I pay for that out of my tax maintenance fund. I, I've gone back to using HP printers only that I order from WWT because they are reliable and dependable and because, uh, I've tried other printers and the quality of print, our scanners won't read. Uh, even using, we've even tried using, uh, the cheaper-priced toner cartridges. Uh, and again, the quality of ink is not good enough for our scanners to read. Uh, so, you know, in our instance, uh, we feel that, I feel that we have to have HP printers and for us to be able to operate daily without having any issues because we have to print every day. I mean, we have to print at the window every day. So, uh, we do have one big, uh, copier. We've had ours for at least six years now and have no problems with it. So for me personally, I, there's no need for any new equipment other than when we, when we do replace printers because, uh, rarely something will happen and we'll have to replace one of the smaller ones. And again, the cost of the printer is pretty minimal compared to trying to have one repaired. You can mail them in and get them repaired, but the cost of that exceeds, again, the cost of buying a new printer, so.
I think all the WWT printers and I, I don't think I'm wrong on this, but they have, they come with a three-year warranty, I believe, as part of the state contract. Uh, so you don't pay any additional, uh, stuff on that. But, um, they're, they're right. There's a, there's a price point that you end up, you know, it just costs more to fix it than to buy it. But the deal is the cheaper the printer, generally the consumables, being the ink and toner, is vastly more expensive. Like if you buy an inkjet printer versus a laser printer, ink will just eat you alive. Because you can, a, a set of ink cartridges, even for my home printer, is like sixty, eighty bucks. And you, you just use one cartridge up and you just about have to go buy another kit because they don't normally sell individuals. They want you to buy the whole thing. So it gets to be very expensive doing that, so. But HP as a, I think as a, the county, we've had very, I think they're, they're very reliable or have proven very reliable. And I know we've had Laniers and, uh, the sheriff has had some Muratex and, you know, Cannons. And they, well, the Cannon was a bigger one, but the smaller desktop, I personally find them very unreliable and they're not compatible and it's, I don't know. I, I just, we, I find something I like and I keep going back there, you know. But, uh, doesn't say they're the best, but what my experience is, we've had to get reliability and the price is, is fair.
Do we have, do we have a list of how many copiers and how many pieces of equipment we've got?
I'm sure somebody does. I do not deal with the copier thing.
We have to go by department or just go by department.
I'm just curious, but I figure it's got to be a lot.
Well, I would say every department has got, I mean, is, well, I, obviously I don't, but a bigger department would have them. Uh, in addition to printers, I mean, they're a separate unit. I mean, they're not very few, the only place I know, well, we did buy a colored printer for EMS, but they were the only place using a centralized, uh, copy machine or copy scanner, whatever, for everybody. And we did buy a color, but it didn't do color, so we bought a colored printer this year for them. But they're the, one of the few departments that have one centralized printing device. Other than that, everybody's got a mix.
It's EMA.
EMA, sorry. Excuse me. Yeah, no, you're fine. You're fine.
I'm assuming you have, you have a lot to use it too. So we're just accommodating four people with that. It's a little bit different than a, it's not the whole EMS department.
The front office, whatever, whatever that's called.
I mean, I, I think the big concern for me is that everybody's doing something different. And we got maintenance contracts with, with every company within a hundred miles or whatever. And it's like, you know, how could we save the county some money by doing something cooperative countywide? Maybe we can. I don't know, but until we explore it.
Yeah, Chris, I think the deal, I mean, I think what you're really talking about is the bigger units where, I mean, and I, you know, I get a call, I just, my answer is I don't deal with them because everybody generally does their own thing. And we don't have a, a policy from the county that says we don't have an agreement. If we, everybody did GFI or KOPI or whatever, that would be, you know, maybe something to look at, but at the same time, where it's such a, everybody's got, I just bought one last week. I think, Chris, you just bought one, right? I mean, was that one yesterday?
It's actually not a purchase. It's a lease type.
But I mean, you just got one in, so it's new. And you got some people that probably had one. It's, Larry's a six-years-old.
So it would be something, basically, you're going, it's going to be progressive anyway.
Yeah, it's, it's going to take a long time to cycle out of what they're in. And that's going to be the hard part is, you know, if you, if you set something in stone right now and say, this is the company we're going to deal with, how do we deal with everything that exists that's not part of them? And I don't know how that works. I mean, you just have to let it go away, I guess.
You just have to wait until it gets refreshed.
Yeah, until it rolls off and they buy and get another one.
And then do we create a monopoly with that company that we do go with?
Because other-
We have to stay with it forever. You know, that's the, you know.
The other companies can't service the machine, with the exception of Rico and KOPI because Rico's the manufacturer and KOPI's the distributor. But other than that, if you go with one company, if they decide, hey, we have you now, which you're not saying they would. But hey, we have you now. We're going to jack our prices up because you have, you know, all of our machines and we're the only ones that can service it and we know it.
That's why I think it all has to be in, in the deal and it's got to be a, a five-year deal. This is year one cost, year two cost. And it has, and it has labor and toner and paper. It includes everything, you know, that we know what our costs are for the next five years and then we could rebid it out to whoever.
It would have to be some, either, either a very short term, a year to year, or a very long term. But it would have to be the, the, the whole package. I mean, if, if something happens, the machine goes out and another one comes in or something because otherwise you just have a mess.
Right.
But like she said, a lease would work that way. But if you don't, if you buy them outright every five years, then you're, you're moving them every five years to accommodate the new vendor.
Yeah, well, and maybe a lease is the way to go, um, you know, and we, you know, it includes the service contract, you know. It's all-inclusive.
I'd like to see the cost benefit of a lease versus a purchase because I do know that there's some leases that we're paying that you could almost buy a new copier every four years because we're paying so much for the lease.
Every two years.
So I would like to see a cost benefit of purchase versus lease. I mean, if, if all the services and toner and things are included, yes, it probably could be worth it.
And I'd say we put it out both ways and then get it back and look at it.
Still have to do that other thing as far as.
Or I think you could leave it open to the vendor too, to come up with some solution that might be beneficial to us.
So their big pitch, like Debbie kind of mentioned, they're going to want to come in and talk about consolidating printers and how to do it that way. Are, are you wanting to entertain those?
I'm not. I mean, you know, look at our facilities, look at our printers, look at what we got. I mean, why would we want to try to reinvent the wheel? I mean, yeah, do we have maybe a few, a few too many printers? Maybe.
So you're going to bid the ones that we have or?
The only maintenance contracts we have on any printers are the large ones. We do not, on any of the desktop printers for the last, I don't know how many years. It's been, it's been three or four years at least since we've had a printer maintenance contract.
Well, I'm going to go back to them coming in, making their presentation.
Yeah.
If you're truly wanting to go in and have them look at it and try to save us money, that's what we're going to have to sit through, is everybody come in and do their dog and pony show. I don't think we have a standard across the county and probably none of the offices are going to be even close to the same. Larry's needs versus Chris's needs are going to be totally different. Now, if we want to, you know, address each office or each department or elected official separately as a group, we can do something like that. I see where you're trying to go with it. I just, there's no standard really, so I don't know.
Other than budget, it's kind of hard to enforce on officials too.
Well, it sounds good. I mean, it's, it's, it sounds like, you know, but yeah, I don't know how you'd implement it.
I'm trying to think across the departments I've seen though, and I think all the units that I, that I'm familiar with, and I'm not familiar with like Public Works, but all the rest of them pretty much do the same thing. I don't think there's really any, any substantial difference in functionality of, of what anybody has because they all typically multi drawer, uh, copiers so you can support different paper sizes. You got a scanner so you can do networks, scan into network folders. Some of them do have a fax, built-in fax, but most places don't. I mean, if that's a, you know, that could be an option. But, you know, generally, everybody's doing the same thing, you know. You might have a difference on, you know, I need a eleven by seventeen or something versus legal or, or, uh- I need a eleven-by-seventeen or something versus legal or letter size, but...
Well, you get into color and black and white.
Yeah, I don't know, well, I don't know. You guys have a color copier, though, don't you? So, yeah. I was gonna say, that's, I'm not really familiar with Public Works, what they have. But, most other places are black and white, yeah, so.
Well, if we have to sit through the dog and pony show, I mean, that's fine. But, I don't know what they're gonna, I mean, it's, we still gotta bid it, so.
We could bet it, it might be that it's, it could end up, yeah, be a lot more expensive than what we think, but...
We could short-list it after the bid to where?
You're just talking the big, the big ones, like the copier?
I just talked about the sheriff for the deputy and all those units, too.
I mean, the only other thing that I would think of is that, I know we have standalone fax machine that's serviced. I don't know if that would be included or not. Standalone, I don't know how many of those there are, but some fax machines and stuff that we have by some of the bigger vendors here in town.
Most of the fax, standalone fax machines are ancient. They really are.
Faxing is ancient. Faxes anymore. Oh, sorry, Sam.
Letter. Letter and stamp.
He writes it as a fax in the letter.
I do. Gotta thank you, I'm the unterrified Democrat.
I would hate to go with the faxes because I think the world is changing to scanning it and sending it anymore. Still, I receive some faxes and I still send some. But, I think the majority of the departments don't use faxes. That's not a good thing.
I was gonna say, they do upstairs in the prosecutor's office, but it's included in their copy machine. It's all one, it's all one system.
I know the jail, their warrants and stuff coming their way.
In their copy machine, too.
They have standalone faxes over across the street.
We have standalone faxes also. Some counties don't have, some of the smaller counties don't have scanning capabilities. Don't have computers.
Could that not be included in that larger unit, though?
Yeah, yeah.
That's a feature.
That give you any direction?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
We'll do what we can and then...
Let's do that and just see if, yeah. Keep moving ahead. Access control bid discussion?
Yeah, this is, we've been talking about this for a while, the access control for the buildings. I sent you guys a document yesterday. Just to kinda summarize it, the goals outlined in there are saving money. Right now, we pay an astronomical amount to Sonatrol monthly. The goal's to get away from that and not have a service contract, but rather to establish an hourly rate in the event that service is needed. And then, B, just to keep it open to where we can get multiple people to work on it, get something that's not proprietary in there. Pretty much, all the buildings are staying the same with the exception of, we'd like to see a few things added at the health department. And then, the front door at the new EMS expansion to where, when they're sending dispatch, they can unlock the front door for the UPS man or whoever. Was that it? Oh, and then we got, we're getting pricing for the Carnegie building, too, but we're not really sure what's gonna happen with that. Any questions anyone has? I did invite Scott Grunden here. I didn't know if you had a chance, everyone that they're building, if anyone had any questions or anything that they wanted to see added or anything before that goes out.
I guess, Scott, as far as the card swipes, the machines on each door, is this RFP going to replace the existing ones or give the vendor the option to use them?
I think give the vendor the option. I mean, if they can reuse a lot of those devices, which a lot of the peripheral devices are, you're able to use those whether, you know, it's the head end that you're probably gonna have to replace. But, yeah, if they can reuse, whatever they can reuse, they should be able to reuse the wiring, the locks, and a lot of applications, maybe even the readers themselves. But, again, you have multiple different readers on different buildings. And so, that's, you know, it's gonna be up to the vendor to decide if they can use that or not.
Will other vendors be able to provide the same, I mean, for instance, we have fob, if you switch vendors, we, but use the same equipment and we have to need to get a new fob? Do we have to go to Sonatrol to get that?
No, what we talked about doing, I mean, again, it's...
Well, I'll use the microphone.
It's gonna be based on the type of reader that you use.
Scott, you just wanna come up here. Do we got a closer target?
Come on, Scott.
See, you're trying to stay back there.
I don't know if I have any outstanding warrants or not, so I wanted to stay back.
We're checking that right now.
No, I mean, what we talked about doing is, it's gonna be based upon the reader itself, is the type of fob that they're gonna use. We talked to sheriff and he said that he would be willing to make the, you know, since they already have a printer and everything else, that would be a possibility for him to go ahead and, when they order the cards, that any new employee would go and do whatever they need to do down there, get the picture taken. And then, the sheriff could actually then make the card and then get it to the different departments. So, that you're consolidating that instead of having each department do that. But, the HID fob is what you have. That's not a Sonatrol card, per se. Anybody can order HID cards. You guys can do it online if you wanted to. So, you don't necessarily have to go to them. It's just, you gotta know the format and things like that. But, that, it's pretty simplistic when you go about that.
And, you know, there are like several systems, the front doors, the system to get in the building is different than what to get into our office.
That's correct.
So, if we did something with the sheriff, do we still have to have a second fob for getting into our office?
Well, basically, what we would do, I mean, we're talking about doing a system that can control all county, but it's handled independently by each department. But, they would give you, I mean, it would be designed that, you know, in Larry's office, this is the card format, this is what we're gonna do, and it's gonna allow you into your particular area and not into, you know, the sheriff's department, not into the health department and things like that. So, you kind of build it accordingly. And then, you might have other people with maintenance that has the card that gets into every facility.
But, one card would work on the front door and Larry's door.
That's correct.
Ideally.
That's correct.
And you could grant access to whoever you wanted.
Yeah, and each department head would then design, you know, I guess, come out with the list of who they wanted to have access to. And then, you know, whoever controls the ultimate, you know, I know Donnie's doing it now, but whoever would control that would have a list of who gets into what particular area. And then, anytime someone swipes in or swipes out, it logs so that in case somebody were to get into an area that they're not supposed to be in, you can do reports daily, monthly, whatever you wanted to do and find that, determine who's not supposed to be in there or who's in there, so that you kinda know who's in and who's out at all times.
Can they be time limited also?
Absolutely.
Eight to five?
Eight to five, Monday through Friday. You'll have a group of people, then you might have management that has 24-hour access, but no weekends. And you have some people with no holidays. Or, then you have maintenance staff that has 24/7 holidays and everything.
So, are we basically talking about all the controls, the door controls being replaced? Or, is that just?
Just primarily the reader. Again, you have old Sonatrol equipment, then you have old Stanley equipment. Looking back at the annex, they have a newer grade I-class reader. If you look over at the Pringer Center, they have the old proximity readers. I think the third floor of the annex, I'm not sure if they even have swipe readers. I can't recall off the top of my head, but they, that would probably need to be replaced. But, again, the wiring is already there. It is, you know, you can put whatever type of readers you want on there. So, again, depending upon who you go with, what vendor, they might...
So, we're gonna have to rewire?
Should not have to rewire. It should be pull the reader off, put a new reader on, and you should be good to go. And then, any networking would be between the controllers themselves, not the readers themselves.
And then, some of the brains may have to be replaced.
Yeah, all the brains are probably gonna have to be replaced. And the brains are housed right now down in the basement of the courthouse.
I don't think he's referring to the DOR.
Yeah, that's obvious, yeah.
Larry said that, not me.
We didn't get on a microphone, though.
There's no Larry.
Did everything look good on the, I mean, I just kinda glanced through the bid documents. I mean...
Yeah, we went, I went with, you know, looked at Jennifer. She sent it to me. And then, I went back through and just made sure that everybody understands, you know, we're not necessarily specifying a particular brand or anything like that. Basically, just some, a proximity reader is what you're looking for as opposed to a swipe because the cards last longer. Just basic, generic details like that so that anybody can bid on it.
And then, does this give them the opportunity to put a maintenance contract on here or not, or?
It doesn't currently. I thought we wanted to get away from that. Did we wanna consider for comparison purposes?
Basically, that's what Stanley is doing now is we pay that monthly cost.
Right.
It says monitoring and maintenance. I'm not sure what monitoring really means. Nothing.
Well, on some of, on your older systems, they actually make the changes. I know at Pringer Center, they actually, they call in the changes or fax the changes in. But, I've been talking to them, and there's a way that they can actually handle it themselves via a website, which means, but they won't get any reduced costs. So, I said, there's no sense in doing that. And I said, just get, let's wait till we get this out and then, since they're gonna be doing it themselves anyway.
And the only other big-ticket items that we'd have to worry about after this, if we took no maintenance at all on this agreement, is replacing a reader every now and then if something would go bad.
That's correct, yeah.
So...
I think most systems, they're, I mean, I've had the Sonatrol. You put my system in at the store years ago. I think I've replaced one motion detector.
Yeah, this is not alarm system. This is access control. It is a little bit different.
Okay.
But, yeah, I mean, basically, I mean, unless you have a huge lightning storm, which I, you know, I suggest, you know, you get suppression on the systems, you really shouldn't have too many issues.
Yeah, we've got a couple downstairs where you blow out, where boards have been blown out and stuff.
Oh, really?
So, the downside, I mean, if we don't have a maintenance contract and we have something that goes wrong, I mean, is it something that we can fix internally and gain access to it? Or, are we at the mercy of whoever we have to call?
I think you're pretty much at the mercy because, I mean, someone steps in and starts messing around with their boards, then, you know, you know, an employee of the county, then they pretty much own the system. So, I mean, I think you're at the mercy of them replacing whatever device they have. Now, I mean, a reader or something's pretty simple. But, again, if you short two wires, now you've got a blown board inside the control panel. It's probably better off just to let them handle all the maintenance on it.
So, what, so what happens if something goes awry and we don't have a maintenance contract on it? I mean, are we, can we get in the building? Can we get out of the building?
That's what we're trying to figure out, whether people are willing to bid on that or not. I mean, if they're willing to bid on it without a service contract, then that's, you know, what we were hoping to get.
And if it states an error that they'd have to...
Right. And you might bid it both ways, I mean, and see what they wanna do. Cause, I mean, I think Stanley's fairly high from what I've talked to other people.
Are you gonna have a pre-bid meeting to go over some of this stuff?
Yes.
Scott, will you be there?
Yes.
If we don't have a service con, Scott, if we don't have a service contractor, they put in there like, if they have to come out, it's so much an hour, an hourly, hourly charge?
Yeah, time and materials, basically, with you. And I would say, you know, you need a, you know, that's, we're hoping to get more of a local presence so that we can say, you know, a two-hour limit or something like that, that you gotta be here. And, you know, I am in this business, but I could not bid on this because if you've got a door swinging in the wind, I can't promise you that I can leave somebody else's site to come over here, you know. And that's why I said, it was just too big of a job for myself. And that's why I said I would, you know, help in the design of it. But, I, you know, I could not handle the maintenance end of it. So, you're looking for a decent-sized company that has multiple technicians that can come out at any point in time during the day.
Is there enough out of Columbia or Jeff City that...
I think so. I mean, I know probably three or four that will probably bid on the job, so. And that, the local companies, the national companies are the ones that are really pushing the service contracts. When I worked for Sonatrol, then got bought out by Stanley, Stanley, that's all they wanted. That's all they cared about was the service contracts, get as much as you can and do as little as possible. And, the local companies still have that presence to where they actually care about the customer.
Yeah, I bypass their 800 number and I call down Lafayette, and they're usually pretty good at...
I'm good with moving forward, so.
Scott, thanks.
Hey, I'm not done.
Oh.
They're using a skipper for me. So, are we bidding it both ways or what?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm good. Scott's not bidding it, so.
Yeah. Have you seen his son? God, he's going to prom, he's about, he's about six foot six. Okay. Tell you what, we're gonna skip around. We're gonna do the long-term last.
I can't keep talking this much. I've been marking stuff.
Okay, 'cause we're, so, well, 'cause I think that's gonna take more time. Cole County Health Department Staff Discussion, Christie.
It's okay.
Is it okay?
Yeah, I don't know. I was talking about it here.
Oh, I just wanted to let you know that with our office manager vacancy, I was trying to weigh the options on what we wanted to do. And my preference would be to fill it within and then not fill the vacancy that would be created by filling the office manager within and give it three to six months and see if we can get by without filling that vacancy. I think if we can make it through the back-to-school EMS rush, we're good. So, that would be my preference. And I would also like to change a few of the supervision. The clinic front desk staff has been historically managed, supervised by the director of clinic services, Mary, the nurse, director of nurses. And I would prefer to go back to that instead of having them supervised by the office manager. So, I just wanna talk about that. And I also had a question. I know we previously talked about, you know, when someone leaves, refill at the very base salary. Is that where we're going with still?
So, I'll just give you my two cents. I mean, I'm good with leaving the vacancy and trying to fill within. And if you're gonna try to restructure and redo some job duties, I'd just like to see what your proposal is, is, you know, if you're giving people additional duties or you're changing some people around, you know, what that pay, what your proposed pay is. I mean, I don't, I don't know, I'd just be open to what you have in mind there, just 'cause there's gonna be some cost savings by not filling that FTE, so, if that works. But, but I guess if it doesn't work, you know, we may have to reshuffle some other things back if it doesn't work, so.
And that's kinda why I told Christie to come to you guys. So, you know about it. So, six months down the road, if she does want to fill that position, you're not surprised at that.
Yeah, 'cause if you're moving somebody up and you create a void, then you're gonna need somebody to, so.
And it's sort of like a stair step. We have an entry-level person. We have one that does a little bit more. We have an office manager. So, if I promote someone to that office manager and I move duties around and give someone else a little bit more, that base level one is the one that we're gonna leave vacant. So, if we would need to refill, we would fill it at that very entry level. That's my goal.
Yeah, I'd just like to see it in writing if I could, just so that I know where they're at, what you're kinda reclassifying people or changing their duties. And, but, yeah, if you're gonna save the county money, I mean, I'm okay with definitely looking at it, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
You wanna ask Jeff if he's got anything?
We've done this before. It was BS, though, before Sam. But, that was the thing, is we made the move and we eliminated a position. And we tried it out on pretense that if it doesn't work, then we'll just go back to the way it was, so. Yep. I bring your proposal and then we can look at it then.
Do I need to bring it up or email?
Or email, it's fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
I like that.
BS, yeah, okay. I don't know if I do, but that's all right. Eugene Engineering Report Service Grant.
Okay, which was your grant?
Turn the microphone around.
You're on him.
I listened, I listened to the clerk's office, by golly, when they tell me something.
We're gonna listen to us, though.
A grant for engineering, to do an engineering report on the system at Eugene. The grant we got was a forty-sixty, which we would have to pay sixty percent of that. I think it was thirty-eight thousand. After talking with Bartlett and West and me and Larry discussed it and Eric, we, we would recommend not taking this one and reapply next year and see if we can get the, maybe some of the other entities out there, like school and whoever has the red field, see if they'll go in with us on this grant, because we were hoping for at least ninety percent. But, the amount we would have to pay this year, I... But the amount we would have to pay this year, I, we don't have that budgeted, so.
I'd just rather wait until next year, see if we can apply for more. I don't see why anybody else would put any, if I was at Redfield, why would I put money into the grant?
Yeah, well, I don't know. I mean, that was just an idea we had of asking.
To pay for that engineering report.
Talking with Bartlett and West, we think we, you know, could probably get a better or more on it by waiting until next year. So that would be our recommendation.
Is this just for water systems, though, or that grant, or?
The grant for doing an engineering study on the system.
Basically, just telling them if they can put it all together on one system and then somebody else could possibly take it over, like Dacquah, Missouri, wherever their name is now.
Doing an engineering report of what you would have to do to get it, to tie in to everybody.
Which would be nice because then it would tell us how feasible it would be to get rid of or to hand over to somebody else.
Right.
But at the same time, it's $38,000 that's coming from that fund.
And we would have to pay 60% of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Well, and I, you know, the downside to that is, is if the grant goes away or, or if, you know, if we're not, I mean, by kicking the can down the road, you know, it's costing us money every year. I mean, because we're not breaking even on it, are we?
Should be.
I thought we were.
Probably pretty close. It's still, we're, we're still behind, but it's better than it was before.
It is definitely better than it was. If you had a well pump go out or you have something major like that.
Yeah, we would be in the hole there.
But even with the engineering study, that's not saying that we're going to be handing it over to anybody. That, that study may come back and say, you're going to have to put a million dollars into it before ABC Waters even going to want to look at it.
Right.
So it, I mean, I'd love to get out of the water business, but I don't see this really helping at this point.
Your recommendation is to wait?
That would be our recommendation. I think we, you know, we would like to see a, a better percentage than what we got this time. Due to budget constraints.
Have you talked to Spectrum Consulting to see if there's anything else coming down the line that we might be able to access as far as the water systems and small city? What about RPC or any of them guys?
Yeah, there's, you know, there's a whole lot more funding. And I don't, I haven't talked to Spectrum, but there's a whole lot more funding on the wastewater side than there is on the, or on your septic, septic systems, lagoons. So everybody's, that's the big concern. And that's where most of the dollars are going is, is for that. And so, I mean, you know, all I, all I hear at our RPC meetings is just with the strict regulations that keep coming and keep being enforced is that, you know, it's just going to get harder and harder. And of course, there's going to be less and less funds available at the federal level to, to help with these things because everybody's applying for them. So, you know, I, I realize that, yeah, it's a, it's a chunk of money, but at the same time, I'm just, I'm just concerned by just moving it down the road that we just keep kicking the can. And sometimes you've just got to bite the bullet.
Was the Eugene school system, weren't they interested in?
There was discussions that they would be, you know, maybe interested in tying on to our system.
But we had, that was just kind of a informal discussion?
Yeah, there was nothing, no agreement made or anything like that.
So there's, this was bef, before Sam. I won't use the abbreviated version there. Anyway. But, so Eugene, Eugene Water, of course, ours, the school, the gas station, and then Redfield. Right, so there was, there was four, four entities that could all possibly tie together. Is that right?
Is there a family dollar there in that, too?
Well, but I think the, the dollar's on the Redfield side. Everything on the, what is it, north side of the highway is all on the Redfield system there.
Yeah, the gas station has its own right now.
Chris wants to move with it. I say punt. Sam?
Uh-oh, Sam's got to make a decision.
I'm going to go with the recommendation of.
Chicken.
No, of Public Works. If Public Works recommends waiting, then I, I think, let's wait.
Just teasing you.
I know. But I, I, I'm going to bow to your expertise. Well.
Well, I don't know how bad Larry would like to get rid of it.
Oh, I know, I, yeah, it's, it's not a good situation.
You know Ed, it's MRPC, right?
Yeah, Ed Sigmund. I'll see him tomorrow. I can ask him about it, so.
You might throw that at him and see maybe if he can, or if they would do some kind of match where if we, you know, we would have 40% of it. We got to know this, well, that was this week, don't we? Friday, we got to apply?
Yes.
Do we need to make up?
I don't think we need to do anything.
I don't think we're going to do something.
Okay.
Accepted.
Okay.
Before you guys move to the next thing, I'm sorry, if we can go back to the security part of this. I know, I mean, Donnie, we're talking outside and we were talking at one point about when we get hit by lightning or the system would go down because of electrical problems here. And we have to manually shut the doors outside. And so I'll let Donnie take over from there.
Get a microphone, if you don't mind. The clerk's giving me grief because they can't hear you and.
What I was talking about down there is the two, there's two doors, three doors at courthouse and two doors here. And we get struck by lightning. Sometimes on Sundays, I'll get a call, you can't lock the doors. And I think Greg could tell you with the two, that you can't get back to the resetter. We get somebody down. One night, him and I both discussing who's going to spend the night because we couldn't get them locked. I'd also like to have a deadbolt lock put on the two doors on these two, on this building and on the courthouse where if we did have an electric malfunction or anything else that happens, it's just deadbolts locked. We don't have to worry about the electrical part then coming the next day. We don't have to have somebody spend the night in the rooms or in the building itself.
Obviously, a separate RFP would be the same vendors. It'd be, you know, more of a.
Tyler, yeah.
It'd be a local guy.
Yeah.
If you have a key on both sides where you lock, it's all I'm asking for.
No, that's.
And you can consider that for your other buildings as well, if you would like.
Yeah.
We thought maybe it'd be a good time to do it since we're doing the other part of it.
Because we've, we've had it hit by lightning a number of times. I've been here.
That's, yeah.
So.
That's a good, good idea.
Then I'll leave it with you.
Should I ask Jennifer to look into that, to, to bid on that? I don't know what money we're talking about, whether it has to be bid or not.
I don't think it'd be that.
Some deadbolts on her.
I don't think it'd be that much.
Okay, well, maybe you will find out for us, Greg.
Yeah, probably just have Greg.
Can they work with the readers? Do they have both?
No, this is just manually, this is not manually.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's say, if it struck the lightning today and fries a board downstairs and I can't get somebody here or he can't get somebody here before 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock, then the door just remains open.
Yeah. Yeah.
Just wait here and give your way to lock the doors manually.
So it's just a way of locking it, okay.
Yeah.
Have a call out emergency call and get them here at night. Basically, come back in there and work on it.
So if the power goes out, fail-safe, everything's open?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll move back to the other building because I was worried about this building and that one.
Yeah.
But I think all of them need to be looked at.
So Greg, could you give that for that?
Thank you.
Because if you do lose power, you got to have a way to secure.
Yeah, that's, 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 okay. EMS, Mike?
Yes, on the agenda there, it has become an increasing challenge for us to cover dispatch, specifically the EMT portion of it. At night, you have dispatchers that work a 12-hour shift. And dispatch, specifically, their pay scale is $1.25 less than the EMT scale. The dispatcher's an EMT. You have, we don't hire anybody but the minimum of an EMT. As well, when you're in that position, you're, you're stuck in that position. So there's two things I'm asking for is, one is raise the pay scale to the EMT minimum. Raise it $1.25. And I'm going to hybridize the schedule where that EMT, one month you can dispatch, the next month you can run the truck while the other person comes in and dispatches. So everybody on nights has the skill and ability to dispatch. You're not having the one person that is completely stuck in there the rest of their career. They're able to trade back and forth, break the monotony, and you level the playing field with the pay scale. As with everything else, it's difficult to fill that position and retain it because of the $1.25 disparity from the field position. And currently, this affects just one person we have employed. And the absolute cost for that is about $3,300 a year. Of course, God forbid, if we have any other vacancies, that would affect new hires. But right now, absolute cost, one person, about $3,300 a year.
I'll make a deal with you. If you can reduce your overtime pay by $6,668, deal.
I think we'll be under that for 2015.
We're getting that.
I don't think it's a bad idea to have the hybridized position.
Hybridized may be a poor word, but it gives you that flexibility where everybody on that shift is able to dispatch. Hybridized, I don't know if that's a word, but I kind of like it.
I copied it off of Michael. Hang around with it.
I was, I was impressed.
You don't just learn that kind of stuff fishing. Well, I guess you could with the blue gill and sunfish and stuff. What were we talking about?
Yeah, crappie.
Something shiny.
Plated.
Whose is that? Is that your computer?
I don't think so.
No.
It's peaceful.
Yep.
Yeah. Seriously. Okay, so do we need a motion?
So maybe we adjust the EMS dispatch pay scale to the recommendation.
I'll second it and I'll watch the overtime next time.
Watch the overtime, yeah, yeah.
That's for that one person.
Yep.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay, now we're going to go to discussion of long-term planning.
Oh, no. We need a bathroom break first.
Yeah, we got.
Well, we've only had one meeting is the problem.
Do we have anything else before we?
I think.
Any other issues?
Because we're going to talk about carpet, painting, and.
Oh, yeah, where Jennifer go? Oh, there's.
We can take a coffee break, a two-minute coffee break. If we don't have anything else. Are y'all all right with that? While y'all discuss whether you're okay with that one.
I can spare the pain of sitting through this.
Yeah, if they're on there, that'd be great.
Oh, yeah. Well, good.
We're just taking a two-minute break. No, we're just taking a two-minute.
You can stay up.
Hey, you can't retire until you give her a UTE.
Oh, boy.
I don't know. I don't know. That's not fair, Larry.
So fill me in.
Always got to find your strength, dude.
Yes? Well, no, we had, that was Jim Casey. And basically, he was, he came, and I thought maybe he would bring something up, but he didn't. So I was hoping maybe to catch him out in the hall.
Yeah, I was, I was waiting for, and there's like two other things that are looking for him.
Yeah, yeah, no, Jim, basically, we, he, he had emailed me and he had three board members that needed to have their, need to be renewed. So he was going to do that. And then, and then, yeah. And then, when that happened, you know, I didn't know what, I mean, it's, yeah, stuff like that happens everywhere. So, yeah, it just, it just, yeah. Thought that was, yeah. We just did, yeah. And when you get people from all over. And it's like, it's like you come over.
She wouldn't. I'll ask your mom. I would, I would broke her into. I'll guarantee it. I think your brother was looking forward to.
Three members to their home terms. We got, not, nothing.
Nothing.
We got, we're not, you know, we're, you know, my, my, I got a new portfolio. We're, that's just going to be nice. We're going to be nice to each other. Chris, Chris is a nice squirrel. We're all being nice to each other.
I'll look.
That's how I do, too. I don't want to spend a lot of time on it.
I think trailers, if it works well enough for schools, we just put trailers. Maybe that one, that one that Mike's.
We'll put that out of public works.
Okay.
I think we're still, we're still live, too.
Finishing up two decks upstairs, but I got another total kitchen room remodel. Then I might have picked up another one that had the bathroom replacement. Okay, very good. Okay, perfect.
Okay. Long-range planning. We've only had one meeting, so I don't know, you know, we, we got all kinds of.
As far as the long-range planning, I think, Chris, you were kind of looking at some outside places. And I'll look at that. And if you come up with something, then bring it back. And so we're still there, right?
Yeah, so I mean, I, I mean, we're still open to looking at the possibility of moving to the old St. Mary's. Yeah, so I mean, I mean, we're still open to looking at the possibility of moving to the old St. Mary's. Or, I mean, I just, I'd like us to decide what, I mean, if we're open to moving county offices to the old St. Mary's, I mean, I'll, I'll keep in discussions there. But I mean, if, if you two are wanting to move the health department there, I'm really not on board with that cause I think that's too expensive.
Well, you know, after we visited the, the community health center, and they were looking for a different space, too, and I think they kind of, they do different things than what the health department does, but they, there's kinda overlaps, too. And so I thought, you know, it would be, that would be a neat building for Cole County Health on the first floor and Community Health Department on the second. And then Don Claycomb at Missouri State Technical College, they, they teach all the medical technical classes at, at Nichols Career Center, and they, they're crammed into seventy-five hundred square feet, about the same footage as what you've got. And as I say, you could put them on the third floor. I don't know, that building's gonna need a lot of, I think Greg looked at it, and the HVAC, and the windows, and things like that. I think as far as, as far as health department, you could move in there and put, put that front counter back, and you, you could be in business and up and running in days, a week, probably. I don't know, the more I was thinking about, and the more I look at the plans, you know, the original plan we had, which was to put the addition on here, to me, still makes a lot of sense because then you've got new construction, and we're building it to meet our needs.
No, we're not. Not even close. That building doesn't do enough for us to expand our operations here or get the assessor out of Carnegie Building. I mean, there's, there's not enough room there. I mean, unless you make that all offices, but then, then where's your plan for the courts? I mean, and we've all thought that maybe the courts don't need another courtroom, but at some point, they will.
You do their big courtroom, and then we take away one of their small courtrooms. And it should work out. But I haven't messed with that a whole lot since we were exploring off-campus until we eliminated that, but.
I mean, I don't disagree with you that something has to be done with the old jail.
Yeah, we, I went and toured that. It'd make a great museum.
Dungeon?
It'd make a great museum. But we're not in the museum business. It's, it's, um, I, I don't think there's any way you, you could make, make that serve any purpose. It's just, um, you just.
I mean, that's four million dollars.
We're not gonna do it tomorrow if we do it.
No, no. No, this is long-range, we're, um.
Okay, so you're, you're not a, you're not inclined to move county offices to St. Mary's? Or you're not inclined to move county offices out of downtown? I mean, if, if that's, if that's the case for you two guys, then there's no point. I mean, I'll continue to talk to the people at, at the old St. Mary's, but, I mean, I'm just here to tell you that I will not vote for moving health over there. The State Technical College has no money that I've heard of. I mean, so you can bring all these partners in, yeah, the community health center, they've got some funds that they could do something, but I would much rather think that they'd wanna be over to Lincoln University where Lincoln students could come to their facility and, and work there, work with the health department, you know? Why would you want multiple campuses?
Well, Lincoln need, their nursing department needs a lot more space, too, but that's, that's not our concern. But I, I think our offices need to be downtown.
I disagree. I mean, we're, we're in a box. We're, there's, there's no way we can continue here. I mean, at, at some point, you just outgrow your space, but that's just my opinion.
Yes, Larry.
And this is, Ralph and I have talked about this, and I don't know if he's talked to you about it, but y'all about it, but has any consideration been given? For one thing, the, the city needs more parking downtown, and they have some things available for, for a big parking garage.
I use a, handing that microphone.
Trying to avoid that part. If the, if the city were to build a parking garage across the street behind Vogel Insurance Agency in that area, they own the parking lot there anyway. They built a parking garage over there that would accommodate more parking downtown and also county employees. You could take this whole back parking lot behind this building and, and put a building there for additional county offices and space. Move all the parking across the street to that parking garage or parking facility that the city builds. I mean, obviously, the county would take a certain portion of that for employee parking, and that'd give you a place to build, probably cheaper than turning down the old jail if you're building from scratch, and.
Yeah, I was, I've been talking with the Baptist Convention, too, and, you know, they've downsized in the, the Old Missouri Hotel. Their top two floors, they're gonna wanna rent out or do something with. But when I was talking to him, I asked him about parking, and he said, oh, we got all kinds of parking. Cause I think originally, they had a hundred and thirty-some employees, and they're down to like less than sixty employees. So, you know, as far as parking, we might even wanna talk to them about seeing if we could lease some parking spaces from them for jury, jurors, uh.
They don't wanna park down there cause it's all uphill.
But it's only half a block uphill. Right now, they're parking on the other side of East McCarty.
Nobody's gonna walk. What's wrong with everybody around here too lazy to walk?
Yeah.
Some people don't need to be walking, though.
They can move the parking directly behind that.
No, that lot behind it, Sheriff White had talked to them, cause they, they would actually be interested in selling that lot that's below the alley. I think they had bought it just for maybe future expansion. So, and I haven't talked to Greg.
I don't think they own it.
In a while. Greg said they did, but.
Were there all the bail bonds?
Well, that the city owns, but they're, they're buying that, but then the lot behind it that's not paved, I think they own. And, um, it, it's, you know, to have a vacant lot near downtown, near our facilities, granted, it's down the hill, but, um, I don't know, that's the whole idea of long-range planning. We're gonna have to think of a lot of different things and see what works the best.
Let's set up a meeting where we just talk about that standalone, because coming at the end of this meeting, we've done dinner for two hours. We can talk about carpet and painting if we wanna do that right now.
Okay.
Are you good with that? Cause we've never really talked about expanding off the back of the building either.
No, I, I think we need to.
The old jail, something needs to be done with it regardless of what you do on the outside of it, with the shell of it, or if you do, you know, knock it down, or if you do just the interior of it and gain something there.
And maybe before your next meeting, you could look at the different buildings and decide what is your vision individually? What's your priority? I mean, is it getting an assessor and collector together? Is it satisfying the courts? I mean, if you guys come up with a three-point vision, then maybe we can start there. I don't know.
Most of the people I've talked to said keep it downtown. There've been a couple of them that agree with Chris, say, hey, you know, get it the heck out of there. You don't have a parking place somewhere else where you have a bigger campus and look at it. So that's why I'm not opposed to looking at it, but it's gonna be a hell of a proposal to move it all off of, away from the courthouse, anything that's not court-related. But I think, I haven't sat down with Ralph and see what he had for the back of it. I know at one point, we kinda talked about, and I don't know, when I say we, I've been me and a mouse in my pocket with architect about doing, being able to keep the parking there. He's totally opposed to that because of the bombings and stuff like that, security issues, so. There's different options out there for that, too. So if you wanted to punt that today and?
Yeah, well, we need, I think maybe have a, get a smaller group and just sit down where we can, um, kinda brainstorm a little bit.
I think Ralph's still on vacation, but obviously, he was an architect, and it's pretty slightly, but it had a lot of good ideas.
Did you email him and tell him that we made him our wellness chairperson for that, for this building, for, for Christie's?
I didn't wanna do many advance.
We, we, we appointed Ralph cause he wasn't with, yeah, so we volunteered Ralph. So he's gonna be our, your wellness coordinator.
Now, I volunteered to be the unwellness coordinator.
You'd be our poster child. So, Larry, you set yourself up for that.
Yes, I did.
Chris, are you okay with?
Yeah.
We gotta do something.
We gotta come up with a plan, we can't just keep talking about some stuff. And, I mean.
Well, basically, we had one meeting, and, um.
Who do you want at that meeting? Are you all right with all the other elected officials? We get input from them, and, I mean, ultimately, it comes down to our vote. But if we have their input, their ideas, um.
I mean, I just, I mean, I really would like to know why, why you feel like county offices need to stay downtown.
I mean, the courthouse, I think it's all attached to, so it'll be attached.
This is all courts. This is all courts.
They get done paying a fine or something, they gotta go to the treasurer. They're always dealing with the treasurer.
But they don't pay fines at the treasurer, do they? They pay fines at the circuit court.
They go up to the treasurer's office for court-related.
No, but I still, I still say we've gotta keep Larry where he is, cause by God, if we move him somewhere, we're gonna have, we're gonna have more people upset when they come down in December to pay their taxes. And you could put up signage, you can run ads, you can do whatever you want. People are gonna come down here.
So you're gonna keep the recorder's office up here? Cause they have things associated with that, too.
Yeah.
That you go to court for, you gotta have stuff, marriage licenses.
You know what?
Non-marriage licenses.
We're getting ready to change to a computer system, and so people adapt and they change. I mean, it's.
No, they don't look at Sam.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, it's true. It's true, yeah, can't teach an old dog new tricks. Anyway.
I can roll over, though.
Yeah, I'd get to, you have to get more than ten emails from him, so.
I'm up to two.
But, you know, I mean.
No, I think we need, we need to have.
You know, and I, I would, I would challenge you, too. I mean, if, if you think that we can't change, this is exactly why Jeff City is not moving forward, is because we are so against change. I mean, this is why we don't grow. This is why there's so many things that we just, everybody just, you know, we have to think outside the box. And so, you know, that's, that'd be my challenge to you, to think outside the box. I mean, we're, we're in a box here, and there's no place for us to go. I mean, we can spread out, we can add a parking garage, we can, we can build a new building back here, but, I mean.
Well, we went and looked at that building, and I was excited, cause it does have a lot of space. It's, I mean, it really does. And it's, but it's gonna take a lot of money to adapt it to our needs.
It will take, I, I will almost bet on this, but I will guarantee that we can get that building for a whole lot less money, that we could build a building and help pay for a parking garage here. I mean, no telling what that's gonna cost. And then we're still landlocked. I mean, so you gotta build a building that's twenty percent bigger than what you need so that, you know, you have room to grow. Cause I guarantee you, we're gonna grow at some point. I mean, look at Public Works. You had enough room there for a while, but now you're bursting at the seams, right? Need more space. I mean, I mean, just, just from my personal knowledge, you know, I built a, a big shop, and I wish I'd have built it four times bigger than I did. So you're always gonna need more space, whether it's for storage or whatever. We, we got that great facility out of Shepherd's, but, I mean, I don't know, fifty thousand square feet, and that sucker's full.
It's all, it's all got, you could have an infinite amount of space, it's not gonna be enough.
Yeah.
But all of this somehow, some way is connected. One way or the other, the courts are connected to somebody. So if we leave one person here, at some point, they're gonna be connected, and it's a convenience thing. Needing more space, well, if we're getting less and less paper and less stuff at the desk working, do it on computers, you should have fewer people. And who knows, pretty soon, we may have people working at home, working from a computer.
No, Debbie, you gotta be here.
I'm dead serious, I'm not even joking about that. There's a lot of people that do that now. That's why you see a lot of office spaces empty here in town, because people do work from their home and their bathroom, and, you know, more power for them, but that's where I wanna be.
Let Debbie work from home, then Sam would have to learn how to use email.
Debbie'll take care of me.
I mean, there's arguments both ways. So we can, we can pound it into dirt today, or we can set up another meeting.
I think we need to have me and just do.
Two hours.
Yeah.
And I think in incorporating Public Works Health, obviously, we're earning so much money, we're only adding the next sales tax, you know, it would be a good idea to figure out what your own vision is, where do you wanna be? So, alternative, so you wanna talk about the painting and the carpet?
Have we decided what we're gonna do with the long-term planning? Or are you hunting that for us?
I'm just gonna set another meeting for you.
Okay, so you're gonna keep this?
And we might wanna do something again, like where we have pizza and.
And who do you want?
You don't get the food until you're done, you make a decision.
Oh.
Do you wanna get more input from everybody else, or do you wanna just start hashing it out?
I'm fine with other input.
Hmm.
Set another meeting for a couple of weeks from now, or?
I don't know what your schedule is.
Mine now through Mother's Day weekend is prom. After May tenth weekend, yeah, yeah.
We can set it for a one-hour meeting. We can sit here and pound Sam for an hour, and after an hour, we get up and leave, so. Too drawn out? What?
I'll just set you.
I'm dead serious.
I'll just send.
After an hour, you lose my attention. I really don't care if I see moths flying in the air.
You know, I would like, if y'all are gonna continue to talk about the St. Mary's complex, I'd like the ability to go look at that. I mean, I, I don't know where, what your envision is if that would come about, where you're gonna put the collector and assessor, and how much work we is on each floor, and, you know, who's gonna be on the first floor, second floor, third floor, fourth floor. In my opinion, our offices need to be on, on the ground level. We have a lot of foot traffic every day. I know the health department does also, though. So, how are you gonna decide who goes where? There's a whole lot more that goes into that that.
I agree.
And I guess I've seen it, seen this space. I don't, maybe Christie has, but, but I haven't seen the space at all. I have no idea what that building looks like on the inside.
Nope. Chris, maybe you can set up a meeting.
Yeah, I can try. Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, I'll shoot for the middle of the minute, send out different dates for you guys to tell which one works for an hour meeting.
Okay.
We got our agendas just, it's not blocked out on our calendar, just put it on as an agenda meeting, and we'll, if we don't accept, then that's just my two cents about it. Put it as the only thing for that meeting, and we'll have a second meeting that week for other agenda items, cause it's gonna last longer than an hour.
Liz?
You can do that thing. You can go beat the four. That week, that's my meeting, the next week, yeah.
How does the fourteen foot for you guys?
I can't be in New York that day.
Well. Just very serious.
You got New York up there.
Except here.
I didn't even know, that's not where I go.
I don't know if I'll have anything on my agenda, just put it on there, I'll schedule around. I don't have prom, prom's over, I have Saturday night, so.
It's good for me.
Okay. Fourteenth at nine o'clock.
You didn't get a date this year, probably.
No, his son, his son cleans up pretty good.
As long as we're done by four o'clock that day, I'm good. Hello, Larry.
Okay, Jeffrey, let's talk about carpet and paint, then.
We put out a couple bids last year, mid-November for carpet and paint. The vendors are still hanging on. Specifically, the one painter has been asking, you know, if he can come in and paint. I was just kind of wondering, wondering if that was still on table, if we wanted to hang on longer, if we wanted to reject all bids. About thirty grand total for interior painting. And then minus the prosecuting attorney's office, pretty much everything else in the annex, I'm looking at about thirty-four thousand dollars for the carpet.
Another clerk's office is needing it pretty bad. What else is needing it? The worst, probably.
I guess that's subjective, I don't know.
Greg, recommendations on the paint?
Recommendations, talk to, if you'd like to have it done.
Okay, so collector's office.
Right now, I would say repaint this office, the office next door downstairs. Carpet-wise, next door here, and probably Larry's, that would get us by for, until we figure out what we're gonna do long-term.
Did we have that in cap improvements, or did we have anything?
I just said a buck sum in there, so there's money in there to do that. I'm not sure what the juvenile bid is gonna come back yet. I will still have a look at that.
I think we were waiting from the get-go, though, we were kind of wanting to see if we were gonna have any plan to move or do anything. And I don't see that happening in the next three years, probably, anyway, but who knows?
Okay.
So I'm, I don't know, you guys, I'm fine with getting it painted, I'm just gonna.
Yeah, I think.
These floors in here are coming up. It's bad over there by Larry, I don't know what they do over there.
That's actually the scene.
Yeah, I know, it's just, I'm just giving them crap.
I'm not inclined to do any of it.
Sam?
I think we need to do something. I think we're, we're. We're letting a lot of our stuff really run down. Somewhere along the way, we're gonna have to spend some money, too, over at Pringer Center, their bathrooms. I mean, it's. They have to do it in stages, but.
I think we can look at next year.
I'm sorry?
That's a project I think we can do next year.
The printer, yeah. Because I went over and looked, because. Michael was, you know, he was just saying, oh, they're terrible, they're not clean and everything. I went over there, I mean, those bathrooms are so old, they've got calcium rings, and it's the old anoleum, and, I mean, those things need to be gutted and brought up to the twenty. They look like they're nineteen sixties. I know they're older than that, but it's.
Building was redone in ninety-three, and the problem with that building was a lot of material was donated.
Yeah. Yeah, but I, I think we're gonna have to do stuff, just fix up a little bit, a little at a time.
So, I mean, you're gonna, you're gonna paint and you're gonna do carpet, and we haven't fixed the windows yet.
You're not painting the stairwell, though, are you?
It's on the list.
It's on there.
I mean, that's a good point, we need to.
We gotta fix the outside first before we start fixing the inside and.
Now carpet, we probably do, but suddenly office areas with windows leaking, there's nothing to do until we're in the storefronts, redo them.
So hold off on the paint, just do carpet?
I would probably hold off on the paint until we start from windows fixed. You know, that's a rough estimate of two hundred fifty thousand for this building. And you all got the bid from the other company, have it all on your desk.
Yeah. Much better than the first one.
So definitely hold off on the paint. Where did we ultimately end on the carpet?
Pardon? You're talking about the carpet or painting, or both on yours?
We were talking both, we were talking both.
So if we did some interior walls and not the whole thing around the windows, is that gonna make a difference? I mean, I haven't noticed it, I don't.
I think we'll, we'll come down and take a look, too.
I don't know that our, the windows, other than maybe the front window leaked. I haven't looked very close at the others, but I will. I know that the paint is peeling off the wall in front of my office below the windows. I don't know if that's from moisture coming in, or, or moisture on the windows, because they're not turning the windows, so.
I mean, we got it back on the table, it sounds like we need to kind of look at some stuff and maybe bring it back, or?
I think we need to touch stuff up and make it a little.
Yeah, but I think painting, if, if it's gonna continue to leak, I mean, we're just painting, it's gonna come right back off and bubble up and.
Personally, I don't want to put the carpet down and then somebody come in afterwards and paint. I know how I. We'll have professionals come in and paint, Larry.
Yeah. Meantime, dim your lights and nobody, it'll look good.
Or we can wait until after your next meeting, to figure out what you guys want to do. If that's the vision, fixing the carpet properties first and not worrying about it, moving people around, then that would solve that issue. We do the windows and then we go back to the painting. If that's your vision, we take care of what we have.
We don't even have a price on the windows here in the annex, though, yet, do we?
Rough price was two hundred thirty.
Okay, okay, because I know what the main bids, we're getting it for the courthouse.
Yeah, I have prices for both, and then we had Jim give us prices, other than the prices you all was giving.
I mean, I do agree with Chris, it's not my point, painting, if the windows are gonna continue.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's.
Well, I agree with you, too, I'd rather have a paint and then do the floor.
Right.
So. But if we had to put the cart in front of the horse on that, we could, if the carpet was that bad or flooring was that bad. This carpet in here is getting pretty rough over there. I don't know if we can, have we cut some of those loose ends?
They're done, and it just keeps coming back and getting worse. I figured I'd replace it, though.
We don't have any windows on this room, so I'll go ahead and replace carpet. What color you want to make it?
No, Mark's kinda toward up there.
I don't do, I don't do that. That was SBS, that was. That was BS.
All right, so we want to talk about it some more later, or we want to put them both? Can we put a coat of paint?
There's no.
Because the one wall over there, the clerks, is pretty rough.
Until they figure out what they want to do, and then go back to them, because if I say.
Would you all be able to just do that for now? And that will at least clean that up. How did, how's Larry's look down there? This is, walls need to be painted pretty bad in a couple spots.
It's getting like every, all the rest of them, they're all done, and then nineties when they moved in, they've not been painted since then. We painted some of the bathrooms, we painted Christie's office upstairs. Little places here and there, we painted all the hallway. We probably paint that wall, it'll be good for a while, but, you know, carpet before all, we're after it, but.
Yeah.
This is why we need a plan moving forward.
Well, we do, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do.
But, I mean, we can't just, we, we have to, all three of us have to decide on something, and, and then that's the direction that we want to go, so. Because otherwise, we're gonna fix something and then we're gonna redo it.
We'll punch, I'm sorry.
Are we punting or are we rejecting the bids?
Well, I think I.
Maybe a good time to reject, because I think I said it.
Since, since mid-November, yeah.
Oh, okay.
I don't know that, I mean, whenever, if, the thing about it, though, if we rebid it, we have to go through the pre-bid again, which isn't that big of a deal, but last time, I think we had seven or eight pre-bid attendees, didn't we? And only. Yeah, and then two respondents, and so now we're gonna reject them, and then if we do it again, hey, come back and bid on this, you know what I mean? I think he's, I think he's hungry for the work. I don't really see.
This is the painter?
This is the painter.
Okay.
I don't see any reason necessarily why that would change, the carpet, maybe, I don't know, but.
Well, how, how long was his bid good for?
Well, it says a minimum of ninety days, he's still willing to honor it. I think, what I think we should do is, whenever you guys kind of get an idea, maybe at that point, go back to him. I don't really want to do it now, because if I say, are you still gonna honor this? Yep, well, no, I get started.
Well, but I, I think Greg's right, until we get the window, the leaky, I mean. It's just all gonna bubble off and crack off again, so it's kind of a stupid, it's stupid to spend that money until we've got, got it, you know.
And how long of a process is that, I'm guessing months or?
Individuals I have talked to, basically, you gotta start at the top of the building and come all the way down with the window sections, because they're stacked. Then you gotta put it all back in, so you're still looking at quite a bit of repair work on top of that.
So, yeah, maybe.
Yeah, but, but I think it's, just time until we get the, this problem taken care of, we really can't. You really can't paint.
When are we doing the windows?
We haven't even bid them.
No.
So this is, this is gonna be two years down the road.
Oh.
You're not talking the next thirty, sixty, ninety days.
I don't think our carpet can last two years. I don't, I don't.
So that's what I'm saying, is we're not gonna do anything immediately with the windows. Paint what we need to paint, replace the floor that needs to be replaced. I don't know what recommendations you have for that, Greg, if you want to say we're fine here, or if the clerk's office says, look, we, we'd like to have a paint. I think some of them said they'd pay for the carpet if we give them new carpet.
Right, Larry said he would.
I don't think we should make them pay for their own carpet, if we need to replace it and update stuff.
I think they were gonna give half.
They were gonna, last time we talked, they were gonna give half.
And that's a separate discussion, but if we're gonna be the landlords, then we gotta be the landlords. The tenant can move out in three months, the tenant can move out in three years, or thirty years. You gotta take care of your building, so. That being said, we need to take care of the windows.
Yeah.
And that's gonna be a pick and bullet to have to bite, but we got it.
So do we want to do these windows before the courthouse?
I was.
I'm just, I'm just asking, I'm just.
My, my personal opinion, seeing what numbers Jim has given back, and after talking with Chris this morning, of course, I talked to you, if we do half the building, you know, just pick two sides that are the worst, do those two first. And I think that was gonna be up around three hundred thousand, my numbers, I think. And then we probably could bid this out and do this whole entire building together, and then finish the project a year later.
Was this bid just the courthouse, or was it courthouse ain't?
Courthouse, courthouse, no, this one.
Quaker can't do storefront, and get the window. For the windows, this, how this was designed and built.
So who bid this one, or was it?
Brady's originally had bid this one.
Just to replace?
To redo this, yeah.
And they're guaranteeing that it's gonna take care of the leaks?
They never wrote that in their agreement, so.
Because that's some.
So it just gave you an estimate.
Right, it was.
Yeah.
Okay, who said that it's the windows that have to be replaced that's causing the leaks?
It's the way the windows are designed to put in blood, I was talking with Jim, and he can elaborate. The detail should have been more of a, more flashing put in there, so we get the water to wick out instead of getting it, and then coming inside. And some of the windows are, the seals have gone.
Can you reflash it, rather than replacing the windows?
You're still gonna have to tear apart to get the flashing in. I wish I, Jim's out of town for the rest of the week, I was gonna try to get him in.
We need to talk about that, too, just.
Yeah. What are you saying, paint what walls we can paint and do the carpet, or?
What we need done. That's why I want to get a list from Greg, and just talk about it again next week. Make some recommendations, say, okay, this room's fine, we need to touch up behind Sam's chair or whatever.
Yeah, I, I want to go down and look at Larry's office.
There's some paper on that wall, I'm sure, how that's gonna be touched up.
Can I pick my color? Ooh, no. Gold, regal, make us look more regal?
Then we have to get new chairs.
No, no, we're giving Kristen new chairs, that's, that's.
We have new chairs.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, we got another meeting set up?
Yep.
Okay.
I would ask Greg that you bring us a prioritized list, and maybe talk to each department and see who needs ours painted, and how bad it needs painted, and what you recommend. And then maybe we can make some kind of motion to that effect. You know, I think Chris is saying no to all of it, so.
Well. Just talk, talk to Sam, see if you can set up a, and, you know, take Ralph and Larry and Chris and go, go take a look at it.
Yeah, I'd be glad to do that, I mean, it's just. Yeah, I'm just, you know, I just would, you know, if we want to build a building behind this building, that's fine, let's, let's take a look at that, but, I mean, I just think that the costs are prohibitive and, and it doesn't solve a whole lot, but. I mean, you're just. You're narrowing the box. You only expand so far before you run out of room, and you gotta go to a bigger spot.
Yeah, but buying a building that was built, what, back in the eighties? Yeah, you're, you're gonna have a lot of.
Yeah, you all.
Expensive, bringing it up.
Look at what we had at the courthouse, I mean, yeah, they're all expensive.
We changed this building quite a bit. We added on both sides, we added a floor on the top, it was, it would have been.
I mean, we got.
Probably better than nine cents to tear it down.
Tear it down, yeah.
That isn't how we used to do things, because they only worked with what we had.
Well, remember, they tried that with the, the jail when they were gonna tear down the Baptist Convention, and that didn't fly with the, with the public, so, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we can keep taking care of the, the old stuff that we got.
Well, we have to take care of the, the older stuff we've got, just. You know, it's kind of like what the Capitol's going through now, you know, it, they've let it deteriorate and. We're gonna have to spend money on what we've got regardless of whether we move or.
I disagree, I mean.
Well, we're gonna keep this building for, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to spend money on it, so.
Well, on this building, but you're talking about, you know, we're gonna spend money on Carnegie at some point. So, I mean, it's, it's not a one-building discussion, it's a, it's an all-building discussion.
Oh, yeah, it's Pringer Center.
We can keep dumping money in the Health Center and keep cramming them in that, in that egg, too.
No, we're not gonna do that. No, we're not gonna do that.
Well, I mean, so, you know, if, if we're not gonna do that, we gotta come up with a solution there.
Yeah. We're not gonna do that.
And so that's, in essence, that's what we're doing, I mean, we're making Christie's building safer, but at the same time, if we move her, now we've just spent money that we can't, we can't get back. I mean, we can keep updating all this stuff, but, I mean, it's, it's not an easy solution, it's not an easy fix, but as we keep, maybe like remodeling your house and then moving. Not very profitable.
Well, on that spreadsheet that you guys do see, we did go back and looked at the courthouse and the annex, as far as the roof, when we redid it, uh, when we replaced the roof, it cost us that much money, it was supposed to last twenty-five years. So then I went out twenty-five years, and we put a flat dollar amount out there. Just again, on the courthouse and the annex, assuming we didn't know what we were doing with our other buildings around here. So that kind of, whoops, so that kind of gives you an idea of what we're gonna have to put into these two buildings. The chiller replacement there, we did it in two thousand five, we spent fifty-four thousand, should last twenty years. So we went out twenty years and put you a flat dollar amount in there. So, uh, other things you could see there, you know, you never know what the life of some of these pieces of equipment are, I guess they come with that, so...
That's a rough average.
Yeah.
As if they are maintained to the tilt.
And I didn't put anything in for carpet.
You may get fifteen years out of some of this new equipment that's out there, that should last twenty, it's just...
And the annex, you could see there, fifteen years, and we did that one roof, we gotta do the walkway roof. So, I mean, this is a good plan for these two buildings as far, but I did not, we did not go into detail on the other buildings, not knowing what your vision was, so...
As long as you don't retire, Greg, we're in good shape. We can always get you one of those hover rounds.
Oh, cool.
Yeah.
Back play won't count.
Yeah. Okay. We got, we're set up for the fourteenth, then?
Yes, it's on your calendar for the fourteenth already.
Okay.
So what are we doing on the fourteenth?
We're gonna talk about long-term planning, which I guess we'll tie into whether...
Let's see if you can, maybe, show St. Mary's to...
I had two conversations going at once, I don't know, I heard St. Mary's painting. What are we doing?
On the fourteenth, I'm just gonna set up for your long-term discussion again.
To talk about paint and carpet again?
Definitely, with that one. Yep.
Facilities, possibly moving, knocking down the old jail, adding on to the back of the annex. It's gonna be a standalone meeting, right?
Yeah.
Going to invite the other elected officials? You good with that?
I'm good, I'm...
You good with inviting them, too? Chris?
Yep.
Or you just want us three just here, talk about it first, and, or...
I mean, ultimately, we have to decide.
Yeah.
We can get all the input that we want, but, so...
And I, I really do think it'd be easier by the time you get there, if you've got your own priorities, where you think this county should go?
Yeah.
Do it though, yeah.
Okay.
It also helps to have the other elected officials on board, though.
Yeah. Is there any other business? Move recess until four-thirty.
Count until next week? Okay, four-thirty, so moved.
Second?
On favor?
All right.
We either gotta have more meetings, or shorter meetings.
This one's a long... We had this one a long, Jim, next week's.